Maybe you can just double check on that. You guys got any questions for this here? Why, why it's coming in, why they're annexing or anything such as that? That was easy Shane. Perfect, thank you. So number eight, the Platte of East Park second edition, resolution number 1707, and Shane, I'll turn that over to you again.
Again, this is a action, following action that was taken at the most recent planning commission meeting regarding the development which we are now calling most affectionately East Park Edition. So this is in effect East Park second edition. It impacts the lots that are shown on my screen. This lot here was previously platted, so we have lots one through four in block one on the south side, we have lots one through four of block three, and lots one, or no, excuse me, lots one through seven on block two which is north of Eighth Avenue. Last summer we built Eighth Avenue, and so now we are subdividing the land adjacent to said Eighth Avenue.
So what this is doing Shane is, is to bring this platte across, just the next one of course will be the understanding on the, on the development agreement with the same company. So what we're doing here is we're getting this so that it's platted. Everybody's been quite anxious to know what's going on in lot four, and lot three, and lot two, and lot one, across the street, block, block two. They can't really sell these until this plot goes through, am I correct?
That's correct.
And then this has gone through the planning commission, and this has gone through you, and everything is kosher for our water, and everything, we're all good as gold on this thing.
Correct.
Okay.
I do have a question. So maybe we're not all together. I'm just, I just, I don't know what the planning commission, and I apologize, I did not look at that one. But when I look at lots one, two, and one, two, three, four, the 132, 144 foot frontage lots, is there, Shane, is there any provision for a road behind those at all to the north? I see you've got that, it, it looks like Seventh Avenue South kind of stubbed in here.
Yeah, right there.
Okay, okay. So there is another developer coming forward with a preliminary plan that will be entertained in front of the planning commission. Twenty-sixth Street will ultimately continue north, here, I'll see if I have it. I thought I had the drawing. But anyway, Twenty-sixth Street will ultimately extend to the north and connect with Willow Creek Drive, and Seventh Avenue will continue west and line up with the, another development to the west which does end at Twenty-third Street out onto Highway 212 to the west.
The, the only reason I'm bringing this up Shane, is how they would service like, especially lot two, three, four from, if they would bring trucks in or however they'd handle that. If what we've got there is sufficient for being able to, if they go around whatever structure they have there, I don't know. But how they would get to the back of those lots?
That would all be handled by internal site development and how they, how they choose to. So there'll be driveways allotted along Eighth Avenue, and then they have to determine where their truck bays would be and their parking lots would be according to their own.
And, and it's not to say that they don't buy two lots if they have a bigger place.
Right.
They can easily do that, or split a lot, or something to that effect. So that, that I think is something that's gonna happen. This is a good deal guys, and we've come a long ways on this.
Shane.
Same question on number slot seven. Are you gonna, are you planning on cutting into the Willow Creek Drive for approaches, or is that gonna be access otherwise?
There will be, we're controlling access along Willow Creek Drive in accordance to our traffic plan, which is approximately 440 feet per space from center to center of driveways. And so these lots have been kind of summarily sized such that, you know, if you started at Eighth Avenue that there'd be one somewhere on the north end of lot six, and one allowed on lot seven, et cetera, and line up periodically throughout this. So we're not using high density driveway access on Willow Creek. Our primary accesses will be internally.
Right, and lot seven is a huge lot when you take a look at that. I think we've had discussion that if it gets split, hopefully we can have a joint, a joint entryway in there, so that you don't have a whole bunch of cuts. There can't be cuts like that.
Just for reference, lot five is about four acres. So lot seven is four plus acres. It's a big site.
Shane, on the, the width of the roads here, you got Eighth Avenue, you got Twenty-sixth, you'll have Seventh Avenue. Are those, what's the width of those roads, and are those roads intended to have any on-street parking, or are they purely off-street parking?
Off-street parking.
So there's no, no parking on any of these roads?
These are, these are commercial routes and not intended to have parking on the street. These are right-ofways that you're seeing on this platte, not, not street widths. No. Yes.
Do you have an overall picture of that somewhere in your, in your file cabinet? Maybe show us what it, what it could look like, the overall, so people get a better handle on that. And what's, what's interesting about this guys, is that we look at those lots, four acres, five acres, they're selling quite rapidly, and there's, there's big things going into those, those spots.
There, there's a little bit larger view, Willow Creek.
I was hoping that you would have something that would give me the whole picture of it, you know, bring in the Morris's, bring in the Enders's, bring in all those.
I don't have a combined drawing, I can just look at the area.
Yeah, you can put that, you can put the lines in there, they'll catch you on that.
I'll see if we have it current. There's somewhat of representation, it's not, not perfect, but.
Yeah, and it does show the road going up on Twenty-sixth.
So Twenty-sixth.
Where they're up.
Yep, Twenty-sixth would come to the north and intersect Willow Creek here. This would become Seventh Avenue which turns into Twenty-third Street down over here, Eighth Avenue of course.
And those are the main arteries. They could put cul-de-sacs into those, or they could do anything they want if they have to go inside those. That would be dealt with later, at a later time.
These are good sized lots, they should be able to create commercial driveways in and out, and handle their own access.
Perfect. Well, thanks Shane. Is there any other questions on that, you guys? So I'm going to need, you're gonna want a approval on this, aren't you Shane?
Yes.
So I'm gonna look for a motion in a second for further discussion. Motion by Beth, second by Bill. Any other questions you have for Shane on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council approval. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you Shane. Number nine, authorization for the mayor to sign a development agreement with Koho Incorporated for the East Park second edition. This time what I'll do is I will look for a motion in a second, we'll have discussion, we'll turn it over to Shane. Motion by Glenn, second by Randy. Shane, you wanna fill us in on this one also then?
Okay, so I closed out of my drawing earlier because I had issues, but the computer wasn't agreeing with me, so I will move over to the wall.
You'll probably have to listen to number twelve a little better when we get going.
So the. Oh, okay, excuse me. So the development agreement is a sister document to the platte, and that's really all we're asking for is, is it's a development agreement that explains how the improvements are to be done, and who's to pay for what, and who's responsible for the various items within the platte that you just approved. I would like to draw attention to one thing that I would like to strike out on page two of the development agreement under item two streets, under D. It was intended for that to be truncated at the, at this point. And I'll, I'll read to what the, what my intention was. Access must be formally granted by the South Dakota Department of Transportation to US Highway 212 via Twenty-sixth Street East, period, and then strike the rest of that sentence. That was a redundant language that shouldn't be in there. So.
Okay, any questions for Shane on the, on the agreement?
Am I correct? We, we passed or approved a broad framework with the same agreement back in October of 2015, is that correct? What, what am I saying, it exists?
Correct. So usually, okay, this, this went in a unique format. Normally, when we come forward with these development agreements, the roadways haven't been constructed and built and all that. We've, we essentially built the roadways off of what the preliminary plan was, that was previously approved by the planning commission and the city council. So we built Eighth Avenue. But at that time, we platted one lot, which is what will be the future site of Trav's Outfitter, and we built, or platted the H lots that contained the, the footprint of what Eighth Avenue was gonna be built on. So we did that, we built that roadway in, in order to entice development to come to, to Watertown. So now what we're doing is, we're now subdividing the land adjacent to that same improvement. So what I did is, as part of this development agreement document, I included the original agreement that we made with the developers, so that it kind of combined the two documents together. I didn't want, it was gonna be much more arduous for me to recreate a new document that encompassed everything in the original agreement and in this agreement. So I just, at the, I consulted with the attorney, and, and we were comfortable with incorporating the document as a single, as one portion of it being an exhibit.
Shane, can you just detail, I recall when we agreed to build Eighth Street, or Eighth Avenue?
Eighth Avenue, yep.
The provisions for reimbursement costs on how the street's gonna get paid back?
Right, and that was defined in that exhibit C of this document. And I believe it was a five-year payback on, on that agreement with the developer.
I think it was as lot sold with a five-year.
That's correct.
Max, yep.
Yep.
So this, this development, this development lot agreement doesn't, doesn't bring the city into any costs associated to Twenty-sixth? Is that the one that comes off Highway right to the east of this?
Correct.
Or west of this? So as it's shown where it goes up and stubs off at the top, we have no?
That, this document captures Twenty-sixth Street going north up to the boundary of this platte.
As to whose responsibility?
Correct. And then there's another.
No, no, as to whose responsibility?
The developers.
Okay, that's what I wanna get.
Okay, any other questions? By the way, Dan had to leave, he has something going on at the high school that he had to be at for a. He has something going on at the high school that he had to be at for a, to get something. So, pardon me?
Yeah, do we need to make an amendment to that?
Yeah, I think we should have, make the motion, somebody amend that motion so we strike out that, that sentence out of there and say, that's on.
Who made the original motion?
Glenn made the original motion and to strike out the words on page two of six D, prior provisions of any building permits or commencement of roadway construction.
I'll move with the amendment.
I'll second that again.
Okay, so I have an amended motion by Glenn, second by Randy. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number ten, consideration to cost share of the maintenance costs associated with the mall thoroughfare. Scott, if you wanna come up, that would be great. We'll kinda talk about the, introduce yourself and you, sure, either one. Introduce yourself when you, when you get up there.
Good.
Works.
I'm Scott Snidker with the Watertown Mall. I'm here on behalf of the ownership of the property.
Perfect. I just wanted to share, Scott, with you that we had looked at this good and hard during our work session. There may be some questions for you, but I just wanted to touch base before we look at any kind of motions or anything. What we're looking at for the public is that this is gonna be about a $20,000 temporary fix. We're looking at two to three years that we can get by on this until, at such time there can be negotiations or whatever happens in the future. But for tonight, for tonight, we're gonna discuss this temporary fix. We're looking at a $20,000 cost that's involved on this road, this thoroughfare that goes through there. And currently what, what I have in front of me is, out of the $20,000, the mall is willing to put in $10,000.
Correct.
And then I've also talked to Hy-Vee, Arby's, Ford, Dakota Bank, First Bank, and Expressions. Between those six entities, they've also have agreed to put in $10,000. So we're at the $20,000 threshold that we were looking for. What I was hoping for is just in case, if the one and a half inch mat, if, if fuel goes up or some unknown reason, our asphalt costs are just a little bit higher or we move to a, a one and three-quarter mat or one and five-eighths, something to that effect, it will change the dollar amount. And there is a good chance that whether the city, I'm gonna ask you guys for approval to go to like 21.5, something like that. Hopefully, we won't have to do that. I think if it came to that, we could go back to any of those entities and say, you know, would you kick in another 300 bucks? And they'd probably do it. So, so before I go on any more discussion, I think we all got a handle on it. I'm gonna look for a motion in a second for discussion. So I will look for that motion.
Come on.
Motion by Beth and second by Randy. Now I'm gonna open up for discussion and they're gonna ask you some questions and if you have any for us. So anybody that has a question, now's your chance to ask Scott.
One concern I do have, Scott, with that is, and I'll be first admit that I use that road about twice a day to get out on the highway because I have to go west for my work. But, you know, when you drive through there right now, there's a lot of drainage coming up, snow that you push to the north.
Yep.
Also, if we were to put a mat on that, of course, you're gonna have a ridge on that. Is there any way, if we were to agree to do this, that you can make sure you don't move your snow to the north? So it's, you know, you think about it, when you're starting to move your snow to the north, you're gonna be going over that ridge in the winter months, so it's probably gonna rip it up a little bit. And plus with that extra drainage, I mean, I think it would, if the snow pile wasn't there, it'd probably make this live a little bit longer, so.
Right. I'm gonna defer to Kevin.
Yeah.
Who does the snow piling.
You know where I'm coming from, Kevin, when I'm saying that, so.
Yeah, hold on a second.
Either that or.
Wait a minute. Shane, I need a picture of that. And Kevin, you gotta come up to the mic in order to be recognized in the meeting, okay? So let's, let's go that direction.
See, so right there, right now, you see Dakota Bank up. Shane, if you can picture, there it is. And just to the west of there is where they pile a bunch of snow. Yep, right in that area. And if you were to drive through there today, there's, there's a lot of drainage coming out of there just because of the really nice weather, and I'm not complaining about that part, but I think with that, and if you think about if we put a ridge in there, if you're going over that ridge all the time, pretty soon you're just gonna rip it up.
We'll end up putting our snow back around our light poles like we used to do it.
Okay, either that or you can go to the west a little bit farther or whatever, so. I mean, I, I wouldn't wanna agree to this project if, if we were sticking a pile of snow.
We moved a lot of our snow, it was in our drive next to Hy-Vee.
Yep.
So that all runs to a drain.
Yep.
The problem we were having at one time is when we'd get a real bad winter, our drains would freeze up out there.
Yep.
And they'd back the water up inside the stores.
Yep.
So then we moved it, tried to move them in different areas. Yeah, we, we'll just start moving our snow in different, because you don't wanna rip that mat.
Well, that's what I'm, that's the biggest thing is, is if you go north and south across that mat, you ain't gonna take long, you'll just have it all ripped up anyhow, so. And plus, without that drainage off that big pile there, it's gonna probably make this last a little bit longer, so.
I think too, when, when talking to Alan at one particular time, they were saying that if you really wanted to, you've got all that property to the south, you could, in fact, push it back there. You've got all that. So whatever you want, whatever you do.
Yeah, we got seven acres behind the mall that we can put snow. It's just that nobody likes to pay to move something that's gonna melt.
Right, but I think you guys have been hauling it out, haven't you?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, so, yeah, I would say. Any other questions on, on this, you guys? So I would like, I think we have a motion now. I would like to have that motion include that there is the ability to go over like 1,500 bucks or, or whatever, because you never know, like I say, what the price of oil's gonna do and what the price of this asphalt will do. So who made the motion on that? Do you recall?
I did, and, and with Randy. Now, when you talk about going over, is there any chance that we would be on the hook for that totally, or would you be willing to go back to some of the?
Oh, definitely go back and see if they would wanna kick in some more.
Okay, can I put that in there or do you want me to just make a flat, flat?
I think, I think just.
Make the money.
Whatever you wanna do, I don't care.
I do have a question on that. Let's say we do go over and we don't get support. Do we need to denote today where that money would come from or do we not need to do that today?
No, I don't think you need that, do you Shelley? If it went over 1,500 bucks, I mean, we could take it out of Shane's budget. Is that okay? Let's do that. It's, it's kind of a difficult thing if you put it into a motion that I have to go back and, and try my hardest and, but I, I definitely will because it was really quite easy to raise the $20,000 to get this done. People realize it's gotta get done.
Just clarifying. I would amend my motion then to no greater than 21.5. Is that?
Right.
Okay, I make that motion.
So I have that motion amended by Beth and second by Randy. Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. We would be supplying all the engineering services for, for this.
Yeah, is there much for engineering on that other than just going over and laying it on top?
No, we, we would maybe solicit a price from one or two contractors that are working in the area and are capable doing that and then, of course, picking the, the best bargain for our, our buck. And then the only other thing that we would maybe have to do is if the, or one other thing we can do, I should say, is if we get outrageous prices, we can amend the amount of area that we attempt to, to cover. That's one other alternate on how to handle a over-budget approach, so.
Right. So when, when do you expect something like this to be completed?
Well, we would probably start soliciting those quotes here within the next few weeks to a month with the idea that we would wanna give this a green light as soon as the asphalt plant is open. The local one is usually open May fifteenth, and so we would try to time it out to where as soon as that's able to be done, we'll do it. Correct. I mean, weather depending, yes, well, all weather depending.
Mayor, is, and maybe this is Shelley issue question, but is there an advantage or a disadvantage either to the city or to the mall ownership or the, the, all of these businesses to run this through the city versus themselves? You know, for example, Scott, you take it and now that you understand what we've got, you guys coordinate work with Shane and run it through. I don't know if there's a tax advantage, any kind of advantage for you in doing that. You can negotiate, we really can't, right?
No, we can, we can negotiate anything under 50,000, so.
Okay, so I don't know if there's an advantage or not of, of running it through the city, to be honest with you.
In my opinion, you know, we've waited this long, we've worked this hard. I would kinda like to see Shane just run this thing and get it done so we know that it's right. And, and I think that, I would just like to have it run through the city if you guys are okay with that.
We agree.
All right. So when did you say it's gonna get done or when it started? April?
Okay, so the hot mix plant, hot mix plant usually opens about May fifteenth.
Can you put like an exact date on that?
Yeah. And an hour.
Dan's listening over here, I'm telling you.
And an hour, but, no, so, so it'd be mid to late May, probably before you'd really get a start on this to get hot mix. And I mean, and that's a critical piece is that we don't wanna be putting a Band-Aid over some cold mix and different things. We want the patches to be done with as much hot mix as we can and.
And you have a good pothole guy here in Watertown?
Yeah, I've, I've heard that we have one.
We, we will.
There he is.
One was anointed at our recent awards banquet, I think.
We will cold patch it for now, though.
Yes. Yes. Okay, so I'm gonna look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, guys.
Kevin, thank you. All right, appreciate it. Okay, number eleven, authorization for the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding and data sharing attachment with the Conning County to participate in the Conning County Behavioral Health Deflection Program and to sign any future amendments to the attachment. We had a, a great discussion on this during our, our work session. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna ask for a motion in a second before we bring everybody back into play again. Motion by Beth, second by Bruce. And then Susan, if you wanna come up, I think this is part yours. Steve, Justin, you wanna light this up?
This is a pretty straightforward memorandum of understanding and my role in it was really minimal, just looking it over to make sure that there wasn't any sort of liability exposures that came to the fore. It worked with the chief, McPeak, and, you know, trying to smooth over really the one big risk that we foresaw, which was the data sharing component because we're dealing with sometimes very sensitive information, some of which is protected by state statute. And the chief was well aware of that. And so together we massaged that issue, got the language changed, and Sarah was kind enough to, you know, have a third set of eyes on it. So I, I feel comfortable with where the agreement, the memorandum of understanding and the attachment are. One quick thing to add, Sarah requested that the mayor be, provided the authority to deal with the data sharing component, that attachment. If slight tweaks needed to be made to it in the future, that might be the result of state law changes or improvements to the process, requiring that we don't need certain provisions in the data sharing agreement, something like that, that the mayor be authorized to sign something like that. And that formality is necessary with a memorandum of understanding between jurisdictions.
Okay. Any questions for this on the, on the memorandum? I have a motion in a second on the floor. Hearing no questions, I will look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number twelve, authorization for the mayor to sign a letter of support for Conning County's request for grant funding to host a workshop to support the stepping-up initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illness in the jail. I will look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by, by Beth. And then, Justin, I'll let you light this one up again also. And if there's questions out there for Sarah or Steve, I would, I would open that up also.
Thank you, Mayor. This letter is pretty straightforward, too, just a request or the, the city's confirming of support behind this particular workshop opportunity that, that Sarah has, has found and would be instrumental in helping out their objectives with the deflection program. I think, I don't know, Sarah, if there's anything that you'd like to add or sergeant rehearsed?
This, for us, this program would, to provide this training would really help us get a really good action plan on the different possibilities of where we could have that, that intercept. It requires city, county services, mental health services to work together. We have currently, right now, seventeen letters of support from Chief Justice Gilbertson, the Governor, Department of Social Services, Director of Behavioral Health, all the way down to our communities like the Watertown Foundation, Community Foundation, the Beacon Center, Salvation Army, Inter-Lakes Community Action, Chief of Police, the County Commissioner. So just asking for one more letter. It just shows to, to the applicants that we are working together as a community.
Any questions for, for Steve or Sarah or Justin from anybody? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And I would say that if anybody has an opportunity to look at our work session, it was a great presentation by you folks earlier. Okay, number thirteen, authorization for the mayor to sign a de-icing chemical purchase and equipment agreement with Quick Flight Services Incorporated for services at the regional airport. I'll look for a motion in a second for this and then we'll go to Todd. So I have a, a motion by John. Second by Don. You wanna give us a little idea of what you're doing or Justin, one of the two of you, whichever one you want, flip for.
Sure, I can go first. So this is the, the type one and type four chemical they use on the aircraft. And the, uh, Quick Flight Services is wanting us to purchase the, the glycol, since I do the paperwork anyways for the feds yearly on how much glycol we, we obtain at the Watertown Airport. It's just easier for me to, to order it. We upcharge them $2 a gallon to buy this for them.
And to piggyback off of Todd's comment, there's also the provision in the contract for Quick Flight to be able to use some actual equipment that the city's airport maintains, specifically a de-icing tower for $100 each time, each flight it's used on. The agreement itself contains in it no warranties that the city upholds in terms of, well, we warrant the quality of the compound, when it's delivered, that kind of thing. We also have an indemnification that is pretty comprehensive and is in keeping with South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance boilerplate for these kinds of agreements. So the, if you have any questions about specific provisions, I'll try to answer them as best as I can.
I've got a question. I'm kinda confused on the term. It's from September 2016 through September 30 of 2017. Are we essentially buying next, next winter's supply or, I just, I got kinda confused on the term of this?
Uh, no, it's for this season.
It is for this season?
Correct.
Okay.
You've also got a new piece of equipment out there that was just brought in by ADI, if I'm not mistaken. You might wanna just touch base on that because the $100 that we would be getting for our unit is probably not gonna happen.
Right, it, it's only used for a backup unit at this point. So if their unit ever breaks, they actually have a de-icing truck, just like Minneapolis or Denver International has. So they actually get in the truck, have one person in the boom and they drive around much more efficient than, than the tower we have.
Todd, if there is product at the end of the year, does it, does it have a shelf life that it won't work the next year or does that, it'll work the next year, so do we have to worry about inventories at the end of the year or anything?
Uh, the, the Quick Flight Services does, does tests every fall on their, on their glycol and they send it in. Typically, it's good for three years.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Todd. Number fourteen, authorization for the mayor to sign a fuel purchase agreement with Quick Flight Services Incorporated to provide fuel for de-icing equipment at the regional airport. Again, I'll look for a motion in a second. Motion by Bill, second by Randy. And you guys wanna fill us in on what you're talking about here?
Sure. This is also for the de-ice truck. It is not licensed, so they cannot drive it on the public road. So we're just helping them out. Since we have a fuel farm, we just allow them to get fuel out of the fuel farm. We keep record of that daily on what they take and we charge them the price at the pump. So we get it for five cents less, their price would be full price at the pump. So we'd make five cents a, a gallon on this.
Anything else? Any questions for Todd on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Todd, if you could, just quickly, I know that our, our numbers were, were pretty small what we were thinking that we were gonna see as far as fuel. that we were going to see as far as fuel. And you may want to just touch base on that for us, if you would, what you're selling now.
Yeah, we're... I estimated, I believe, six thousand dollars for the year for revenue source from the fuel flowage fees. Currently, we are doing between twelve and fifteen hundred gallons a day. So we've more than tripled the line item revenue for that fuel flowage fee. So that's a ton of fuel we're doing, just on the commercial side of things.
Perfect. Any questions on... From Todd on that? Thanks, Todd. Number fifteen, authorization for the mayor to sign a professional service agreement with Helms and Associates to provide engineering services for the airport runway project. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion on this. Motion by Bruce. Second by Glenn. Todd, I'll turn this back over to you guys.
Sure. I'm going to hand it off to Mike Schmidt. He's our engineer on the project.
Good evening. Earlier before the council meeting, I handed out a sheet of paper. I think it's part of the supporting documents as well, but just something you could have in your hands. So recently, we completed an airport layout plan with a mini-master plan or narrative report for the regional airport here. The LP looks at several factors, not just future capital improvements at the airport. We look at issues with the approach, departure surfaces, obviously, future expansion, commercial areas, additional hangar areas. The other thing we do, what Todd is pointing at, is the Exhibit A. This comes directly out of your airport layout plan. Now, the Exhibit A is... With the FAA requirements, has grown extensively on how we evaluate the existing property of the airports. So you can see several areas located on this document. There's blue areas in here that deal with conditional use areas or previous... Excuse me, previous land releases that were done by the city and the FAA years ago. There's also things of future land releases, which are in red. Those are commercial areas that were developed here as of recent. There's the National Guard Shooting Range, Casino Speedway, pit area. The FAA looks at all these properties and says, okay, if the airport's going to have other uses than... For aeronautical use, they want to be noted on your ALP, and they want the city to get fair market value for those areas. There's also areas dealing with the ARF station, the baseball and softball fields. Now, Todd, you want to kind of point at those as I... So after completion of the ALP, essentially, we met with the FAA to go over everything at the airport, the existing airport site, where there was land releases granted years ago and what the future ones are. And Todd's been extremely instrumental on getting these areas addressed and taking care of them. There's also roads that are currently on airport property without any dedicated right-of-way. So we... There's a lot of things we want to clean up. There's over twenty-three parcels located on your airport that the city owns for airport use. One of the things we want to do is clean that up, get it down to a half dozen lots, parcels, all the plating associated with that. The old lots are still in meets and bounds. So there's just a lot of things we want to clean up land-use-wise at your airport. Kind of rambled on here a little bit. Is there any questions so far?
How to get to be such a disjointed parcel map? Is that due to acquisition as it grew, or...?
Absolutely. You know, this was an old bomber base back in the forties. Yes, and just continual acquisition throughout the years. Some was accumulated using Airport Improvement Program funds. Some were just basically granted over from the military. It's just a conglomeration of different parcels and trying to get everything cleaned up so when it comes to legal surveys and things around that area, it's not such a pain for local surveyors.
Have we had... Excuse me, have we had problems with that recently or in the recent past with survey issues? I guess my question is, what do we gain by doing all that?
You clean it up for the city-wise. You know, like I said, you've got roads, if you want to point to the roads that are currently on air... City streets that are currently on airport property with no dedicated right-of-way. A lot of this is just cleaning things up. As far as getting the lots on to... From twenty-three parcels down to, say, a half dozen, it's going to benefit more of the city and Todd on a just... Okay, here's all the lots, the platted lots, you know, for the deeds and things like that at the courthouse. That's basically the only benefit. The meat and potatoes of this is to get your land releases in order with the FAA to be compliant with your grant assurances that you sign every time that the city of Watertown accepts an AIP grant.
Todd, can you share the cost of this engineering and then what the cost share is of this? Can you share that with us on... Do you have it on the screen by chance?
I just wrote the... I don't have the document. I just wrote the lump sum value of this planning.
Seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars and eighty-two cents. And our share is five percent of this.
The scope of the services for this have been reviewed and approved by both the state and the FAA. This is something that the FAA is pushing us in the airport to pursue to clean things up. You know, their records don't show that some of these land releases have been quote-unquote "released." So they want to work with the city in getting things cleaned up.
So is this tied then or required by part of our airport or our runway improvement project then? I mean, are we talking... Or is this just being done independently?
This is totally separate of your runway improvement project. Absolutely. It is something that's been on your capital improvement plan now. It's been sent up through the council, it's been sent up through the state and the FAA. It's a recognized project by all parties.
It's just basically within... They stuck it underneath the runway grant project number, but they're two separate projects.
Okay. I guess my ultimate question is, it's still only five percent is what our portion is?
Correct. Yep.
Any other... Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any old business you folks needed to discuss tonight?
I just have a old business announcement. We've done as much as we can to try to get people to sign up for alerts for the garbage. And we've just gone through another holiday season. I noticed that in our area, people put their garbage out the last year on... Or last month on Monday and left it out there until the next Monday. And so it was blowing around and kind of looking bad. And I know people may not read the paper or listen to the radio, but I'll be willing to bet everybody has their cellphone within two inches of themselves. So if you could go to the website and sign up for alerts for when you should put your garbage out and when not. And if you did put your garbage out yesterday and it hasn't been picked up, please bring it back in. There's a couple of streets in town that really look bad. So that's my bandwagon thing for the day. You can get to it through the city council or city website.
You can get to all kinds of different alerts. You get snow removal alerts, you can get... I get thirty alerts a week probably on different things, so...
And there have been things sent out in utility bills and, you know, we've done it... You know, the city's done a good job of getting the word out. So I just want to go on record as kind of giving another push to people to get signed up for those alerts and put your garbage away if you took it out.
Thanks, Beth. We did put tags on those garbage cans, you know, we went around the other day and put them on. Shane, I'd like you to bring up another thing under Old Business and put up the screen and bring in Twelfth Street East. I think it's northeast. I think, guys, I've been through that road numerous times. We have to do something and just kind of get off our butts and say, let's get this road fixed and get it done. And just get... I mean, this is a road that is horrible right now if you were to drive on that. We put millings over the top of it without sealing it. The millings were a huge mistake at the time. Because what's happened is that now they have created potholes within itself, and we really can't go through there with the road grader and clean up the millings because as hard as rock, you know, you just can't do it. So I am going to be bringing forward to the council here shortly that we... That we put this, whether we can do it in seventeen or we... We'll look at that, I'll put that in two thousand and eighteen budget. But we've got to get it done. And whatever we have to do, I had to pay for my road, sorry, mall. But let's get Twelfth Street East done here, okay? I just wanted to bring that up so we all knew it was coming forward.
Didn't that one time we budget X amount of dollars every year to try to take care of that?
Yeah, did we keep... I don't think we kept that in there, did we, Shelley? Yeah.
Okay.
So let's make sure we do some of that. And Shane, we're going to need to get some better numbers from you to get what the curb... Curbs are in there and get that road fixed up decent, okay? So I don't have any old business. Any new business you guys needed to discuss?
I just have one thing I wanted to touch on is last week, myself and Jandeburg met with Beth Miller and her counterpart from Retail Strategies. We met in the morning before they... They'd already been here a day, and they were going to spend their second day here. A lot of excitement in that room that day. I mean, they agreed that Watertown's prime for the... Prime for the plucking with a lot of retail developments and a lot of retail businesses coming to town. So they're pretty excited to get to the trade shows. They basically did an inventory of the properties that were in town, some of the existing properties, and of course, inventory of the businesses we had. Thank you again for... Earlier tonight for getting started on one-way street or changing them because that was one of the first things when we started talking about downtown. One of the first things they brought up is, is there any interest in the city of changing the streets back to two-way? Because they see the importance when they help develop downtown districts to return them back to two-way streets. So thank you for that earlier tonight.
Perfect. I just wanted to, and I know I should have stayed with Old Business. I wanted to just touch on... Had a great meeting, Randy and I and a couple others attended a meeting on ice the other day, Friday, I think it was, or last week. We were at Sioux Falls with the architect, engineers and such. And we had a really good conversation. There's still... We're still tweaking this plan. It will be tweaked. I think we should have something in front of us here by Thursday, Friday. I'm going to show the council at... In the real, very near future, before we share it out with the public to get more comments from them. Because I think it's important that we have the figure skaters, the public involved, the hockey players in this ice. But it's really changed. And once we get it, then we'll go out for the costs, see where we are and what we have to do at that particular point. So we have no idea where the costs are by doing these tweaks. Could be dramatic, it might not be much. I don't know.
We did also stop and take a look at the one in Brookings. Very nice facility, don't get me wrong, but I think ours is going to be a little bit nicer, so...
I think it's going to be extremely nice, yeah. And then, Mike, would you share, if you would, you or Bruce, either one of you, could share a little bit about the Wellness Center? I was up there today, and it's just a fantastic place. Either one of you, if you want to do some sharing?
Well, construction-wise, it's ninety-nine point nine percent done. Really, the last couple of days, they've started to move in some of the furnishings for the building. So those are starting to come in, and it's starting to get set up operationally. Some of the systems, like the air systems and such that have not been fired up yet, are being... In fact, one of the main ones today, cooling system will be fired up at a later date. But so it's all starting to come on right now and determine, you know, functionality, make sure that things are running like they should be. For the next, gosh, two and a half to three weeks, we'll continue to see supply-type items come in. And it's... So it's fun to see the actual furnishings come in and start to take shape now as an occupied building. So I think we're still, Mayor, we're looking at the eighteenth and nineteenth for like a twelve to five each one of those days of March for kind of an open house. And then ribbon-cutting the morning of the twentieth of March.
Right. They'll be open for business at 5:00 a.m., but we'll have a ribbon-cutting at about ten o'clock or so.
Yep. So that'll be the actual first day, is the twentieth of March. So it's coming along. It's very exciting.
I think everyone will be extremely impressed when they see the facility. Just want to mention, too, the signage is all in place now. Inside the building, it looks really, really good. The Prairie Lakes Wellness signage throughout and also on the exterior as well, so... Yeah, Steve asked me to mention furniture. I don't know exactly what you want me to say about that, but...
Well, it's all coming in, you know. I think if you take a look at it, right now, there's free weights being brought in, there's Cybix machines being brought in. There's just all this. And then, of course, there's furnitures, there's benches being brought in. This place has really taken shape. And from day to day, it's just amazing, the changes that we're seeing. And it's just... It's going to be a great facility. I had a couple of gentlemen up today that I took through and invited John Solon, but he didn't make it. Just wanted to get that on the record.
I have a job.
So it's just fun to see this happen. Rob is not here right now. He was up and swept some of the, you know, the sidewalks and just... It's just amazing how it's coming together, so...
There's a lot of excitement starting to swell on. I get asked a lot of questions. Just last week, I posted some pictures on Facebook, and there were over two hundred chairs, which permeates out into the community. And so that's prompted a lot of questions and a lot of interest, a lot of excitement. And there should be. City should be very proud when it's done.
I think so.
I'd like to personally thank both Bruce and Mike for the hard work and dedication they've put into that project. I mean, it's taken a lot of their own personal time, and they've put a lot into that, so thank you.
I want to personally say they've almost driven me into crazy man's land, but other than that, it's okay.
Well, if you'd start listening.
Yeah, but remember, Steve, that two out of ten of us are...
I'm just thinking, okay.
See, now...
Two out of ten are already crazy, so you...
And I heard that that was a really short trip for you to get from...
Yeah. So any other new business you folks need to discuss?
I just wanted to give one quick announcement. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. I'm talking a lot now. Many of you know that I do a lot of work with the Watertown Initiative to prevent sex trafficking. And the House Bill one-one-one-eight just came out unanimously from the House Judicial Committee. It's something that will make a lot of good changes for minors who are victims of sex trafficking. What we need now is for the Senate, House, and Human Services to pass the bill Friday. And so Kelo has a nice link, or you can contact me, or you can contact the Coalition. And I would appreciate any support, phone call, email, letter that anybody could write because this is really going to make a big deal for targeted minors, human trafficking.
Thanks, Beth. Any laser member reports? Any reason to go into executive session? Otherwise, I'll may ask for a motion in a second.
Can I have ten seconds of personal time? I'd like to wish my wife happy birthday today.
Woo, dude. Nice.
Thirty-nine again.
All right.
That's not old business, is it?
Okay, I'm looking for a motion in a second to adjourn. Motion by Glenn, second by Brad. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.